Coming out, it's now six o'clock, September 4th. Time for regular scheduled board meeting. The night I've asked Commissioner Richardson to open us with the indication in the pledge.
As we pray. Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you for safety. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here tonight, take care of the business of the community and business of the county. We ask you, Lord, for your guidance. We ask you for your wisdom as we make these decisions that we may represent our people well, Lord, that we may represent you and all that we do and say. We ask you, Lord, to be with our men and women in blue, Lord, those who are serving overseas, those who are serving here at home in military, Lord, all who put their lives on the line for the sake of others. We just pray, God, that you would keep them safe this week and especially tonight. Lord, for those who are in the path of the storm, would you ask that you would protect them? Lord, protect those who will be helping out as they go in, especially the linemen that go in and restore power, keep them safe. For all this, Lord, we thank and praise you for what you'll do and we ask it in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes, August 21st, 2018, regular scheduled board meeting and August 29th, 2018, emergency meeting. Any changes or corrections?
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on to consent agenda, we have two through 14, 11 and 12 have been asked to be pulled for discussion. Any others? Hear none. Need a motion to approve two through 10, 13 and 14.
Motion approved.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right. Number 11 is authorization to apply for Department of Environmental Protection Florida Grant Development Assistant Program. Commissioner Sessions asked for this to be pulled.
The reason I asked to pull it, to talk about it, there's not any real specifics here. Is this just a, is there any amounts on this grant or any specifications to the grant or any limitations?
Mr. Scott. Plan on doing two different grants, $250,000 grants. We don't have to match those grants. The two projects we have in mind are the Louisville Park that we did land swap for back months ago.
Okay.
And then it'll be the Phase Two of the Douglas Center.
That's in number 11 or 11 and 12?
That's 11.
That's for 11?
Right.
Okay, Douglas, Phase Two. Okay, and then the number 12?
Well, let's take action on number 11. Anyone else have any questions on 11?
Yes. What does Phase Two represent in Douglas Center again?
Well, we plan on doing ball field improvements. And that sort of thing kind of depends on whenever y'all decide what y'all gonna do. But we'll go ahead and write the grant for ball field improvements first.
Okay, so that's what Phase Two encompasses. Phase One is the expansion of the building of the...
Playground.
Playground, okay.
Right. Also some ball field improvements also, but I'm sure we'll be doing some of both. Probably add some more playground features also.
Any other questions?
Motion approved. I'm going second it.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, 12 is authorization to apply for Department of Agriculture Consumer Services Agricultural Grant. Greg Sessions again asked for this to be pulled, but...
Basically, what we look to be doing there is say, for the Coliseum facility, extend, we've got, remember we did the current grant, we asked for permission to go out to bid. We don't expect to be able to do is all what we want to do. When we wrote the grant originally, it was like for $200,000,000. They expand both ends of the arena. That's the first thing we'd want to do is the arena. Once the bids come back in, we might could shift that money to the hog barns and some other areas. But the arenas, the first party.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
What we, we wrote it for, what, $200,000? Got approved, 80?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine. Okay. Any other questions on the agriculture consumer services grant?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions. Was that you, Mr. Hale?
Yes, sir.
Second by Commissioner Hale. Any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, it's now 6:05. We have a time specific at 6:05 or soon thereafter, if a matter can be heard, discuss the possible board action. Preliminary plat for Harvey Estates subdivision. Ron Meeks, zoning director.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is another preliminary plat approval that we have before the board for your approval. The name of the subdivision is Harley Estates. Property is located in agricultural one zoning district. The property is located in section 17, township two south, range 14 east, at the intersection of County Road 136 and 89th Road. Total size of the subdivision is 20.11 acres in size. Contains a total of four lots. Those sizes of those lots are five acres plus in size, or like 5.02, 5.03 acres in size. Final plat approval will come back before this board in approximately 30 days, once the title opinion work is done. And then we will have plat prepared for signatures at that time. Tonight, we would just be asking for preliminary plat approval so that we can proceed with the next step in the process. If you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Any questions? Any questions on this end?
I just have one question, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On this plat, you said you already got four. How many are you planning on having put in? Just those four?
Of the lot? Four lots there, so you would anticipate having four single-family residential structures placed in one per lot.
No plans to have any additional ones put on there?
Well, I mean, there's, the density in the areas, one dwelling unit per five acres, so they got one primary dwelling per lot. There's some additional requirements that allow temporary use permits for family members and things like that. So sometimes you do have mobile homes placed on the property for family members in situations like that.
Okay. Any other questions? They'll have a motion to approve preliminary plat.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right. Mr. Scott, you make your way back up here, we'll start over. Staff reports, got Greg Scott, Parks and Rec, Airport Manager.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate being back up here again. Just give you a few updates on what we've got going regarding the airport. We'd be bringing an agenda item probably the next commission meeting to let y'all approve, the increase in hangar rent, 3%. We've not increased the rent since I've taken over the airport and made quite a few improvements since then. It customarily increase every year or so, rent at the airport, it's more self-sufficient. And so we'll be bringing that to you the next commission meeting. We are also working on a project to, we've got some obstructions, instrument approach obstructions, tree line, both on the seven end of the runway and also the 24 end of the runway, 25. Anyway, it's some trees and been working with landowners to try to get that resolved. So that's an ongoing process. So be making some improvements there shortly, we think. On the parks, we're still waiting on notification from the water improvement grant that we received from Game and Fish. We received that a couple of years ago, this one at Peacock Lake. There's some federal dollars tied to that grant apparently, and we cannot get a straight answer from FWC when they'll release, we haven't even received a contract yet to sign yet. So hopefully we'll get that done while the water's low. If not, it'll probably be approved whenever the water gets high, so it would be a different process. But anyway, making some improvements there, we hope. We're trying to also set up a meeting. I know that Commissioner Richardson's been anxious and we're trying to get a meeting set up with FDOT. We met with Water Management, I guess, two months ago now, looking at the project down in Branford. Just to give you an overview, the idea of what has been proposed is to do a river walk along the river, along the trail, the greenway there in Branford, the trailhead, and so when people can actually see the river and be a focal point and a way to get people there as more of a destination. But part of the idea also is to take the walkway, the river walk, under the bridge there on 27, and then tie it into the spring. So we're still trying to get a meeting set up with DOT. We hope to get that done, set up this week. Regarding football, we've got a few more kids signed up for football this year than the past. We've got eight teams total playing, and it's nice little uptick in the numbers on that. But anyway, any questions that you've got? Be glad to try to answer those for you.
When we talk about a river wall, are we talking about like a dirt trail like the Florida Trail is, or what are you envisioning?
What we'd like to do is create a paved, where there'd be pavers or concrete. There's probably be some features that go out over to look over the river. Depends on how we word those and what Water Management will approve. I'm sure the Corps of Engineers will be involved with that. It's gonna be a process to make it happen, but if you've gone to, you know, not a good comparison to San Antonio or Augusta, a place like that that's got river walks and that kind of stuff, it's just a nice amenity to, you know, draw people in and look and visit. Except for Ivy Park, it's hard to really get a feel for what the river looks like. There's some great views on that upriver side of the bridge. But again, this is gonna be a, I know the Commissioner doesn't want to hear this, this will be a process to make this happen. But we hope to get some designs and stuff, at least generic designs done, so we can get an idea what...
We'll be long dead and gone before it gets finished.
And me too.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you, what you thought a timeframe on this would be?
Well...
We can find it. We can go ahead and get started on it right now.
I think the first thing we do is write a Florida Community Trust Grant to try to purchase the property and use your match money, you know, the money y'all set aside as match. You know, a project like that, you're looking at five to 10 years to get it done if all the money comes like you would like for it to. I've heard friends of mine in different places, when you start looking at Corps of Engineers and Water Management Districts and other regulatory agencies on permitting, permitting a loan sometimes takes years. So I did meet with some DOT folks last week, I'm sorry, not DOT, DEP folks last week, and they were very encouraged that we were doing the lay-in-the-groundwork first with DOT and Water Management and those folks before we start looking at grants and that sort of things. So we're trying to know what to ask for before we ask for it.
Exactly.
If that makes any sense.
No, I just, I know we had set some money aside in the budget, but I think you were at during that little portion of it, and I was just wondering how long we were looking at before we had to possibly budget for it or if we needed to budget for it now.
Well, we were hoping, quite frankly, we were hoping to get some meetings set up earlier with some of the regulatory agencies, and we can't get, I'm gonna make some calls this week to get it set up, but I was waiting on the engineer to do some things. But anyway, FCT grant deadlines is in the fall. It's quite an ordeal, a long process. When another grant writer, or not, I'm sorry, not grant writer, another engineering was involved, we had talked about, you know, them writing the FCT grant for us, and since then, he's not with them anymore, the firm, another engineers on board now, so we hope they can still do that for us.
All right. Any other questions? Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Moving on, item 17, general business, discuss possible board action, contract for auditing and accounting services. Richard Powell and Randy Harris presenting.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
He can have mine when he's done.
Yeah, me too. Pass it down there.
Yeah.
Our office, Hal and Joan, very much appreciates the many years we have served as auditors for Swanee County and hope to continue serving the county for many years in the future. Our current contract with the county provides that the annual audit and fee is renewed on a year-by-year basis for an additional three-year period with the prior fee adjusted by the change in CPI. There's also a provision where the fee may be additionally adjusted when the county begins significant new activities, creating a need for significant additional auditing services. If such activities are of a recurring nature, the applicable additional fee is added to the base audit fee. During the past several years, Swanee County activities have significantly increased well beyond the applicable CPI increases. For example, total county expenditures increased 33% from 2010 to 2017, while the total CPI increase was only 9.4%. I characterize this as a Randy Harris factor. This has caused the audit fee to be significantly less than the work required to complete the audits. We, of course, have always fully completed the audits to the best of our abilities. I'm requesting that the board adjust our fee by $13,460 for a total fixed fee of $66,595. This will bring, and I have a calculation, the fee to the equivalent paid by the county in 2010. I propose that the fee remain fixed for three years and then be revisited for the subsequent three years. County would, of course, continue to have the option to terminate the audit contract annually with required notice, as shown on the attached comparison, which at the top of it, with audit fees in similar counties, this will still provide Swanee County with an equivalent audit fee much lower than surrounding counties. Thank you for your consideration of this fee adjustment. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Ms. Harris?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say that, you know, that 33% increase is in large part due to the, our aggressive attempts to obtain these grants that we've all spoken about for the last several years. You know, we talk about the grants, we talk about the engineering services and contracts and construction. We never talk about the associated expense with the auditing of all of those expenditures and grants and records. But Mr. Powell does more than that for us. He actually has always been available when we're talking about other financial issues and we need consulting. Mr. Powell's always participated in that, took the time to evaluate our needs and come back and meet with us, talk to us on the telephone, always been available when we had a need that helped us to move forward, and I think he's done a splendid job for us. My request would certainly be that we continue with his services and consider this a very modest increase for the significant increase that he's seen in the workload that we've been pushing his way.
Any board members' comments or questions?
I don't have any.
Do we have a motion to renew the agreement and include the increased fee?
I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just briefly, instead of renewing this agreement, because we're starting with a new base, basically, can we just redo this one or just redo the agreement beginning here and moving forward? Because, yeah, if somebody looks back on this and doesn't see that we started with a new base, could be a problem not in the next three years, but, you know, somewhere down the road, so.
I'm fine with that.
I make a motion, we approve a new agreement that lasts for the next three years and accept this offer.
Got a motion by Commissioner Sessions, so I have a second.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
How often have we revisited this? I know you've got three years in here. When is it normally? Has it been four years, five years yearly?
It's been on just a year-to-year. The contract says that it's, it is self-renewed if there isn't an action by the county to do it. And again, it's an older agreement, but it's worked for, I guess, the county.
So it's passive renewal? That makes it a passive renewal?
Pretty much, that's the effect.
So are you, are you suggesting then that we go to a three-year contract with a year-to-year, again, passive renewal on it, or should we be looking at it every year? Obviously, we gotta pull this, if you're talking about a three-year agreement, how are we gonna, is that something that you do?
The current contract says it is either renewed annually or it can, at the board's option, it can be renewed for three years with the CPI adjustment. So, and I'm just suggesting, or suggesting, that it be renewed for three years without a CPI adjustment in those three years, and at the end of three years, re-look at it and see what, you know, and the board knows, I haven't ever been up here before asking for something like this, and because I don't like, I'm not gonna say, well, in a year, expenditures increased 4%, CPI was 2%, I want, you know, just, all of this, we'd like to reset the base so that it's in line with the amount of work we do. But I'd equally be happy to say just still have the year-to-year.
Counsel, you have a, you don't have a problem with any kind of legal issues or anything like that with...
No, sir. The three years, it's a set, this, and then you all need to say whether it's the CPI added or at the end of the three years, we revisit the whole thing again.
I don't mind having a, considering how much you charge us based upon our expenditures and everything. We're pretty much lower than everyone else around us. I don't have a problem having a price guarantee at three years. I think it's a great idea.
And that's why I asked the question.
I just want to understand it, that's all.
Yep.
So based upon that, one of us could second it.
Yep. I'll second it.
Good.
I got a second by Commissioner Hale. What were you saying, that they need to include?
Do we need to include that?
That...
I mean, I understood it was a three-year deal. I mean, that's the way I...
And in my motion, I said three years.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, got a motion by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Hale, to approve for three years with the increase. Any further discussion or comments? Hear none. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Our office, and I especially appreciate your work.
Thanks, sir. 18, discuss possible board action, any items associated with the water of the wastewater plant at I-75 and 136.
Let me just briefly comment. I just want to say that while I don't have a big report for you on that, my hope is that, and I've spoken to Mr. Bailey about it, that we can be up and running with utilities over here by middle of next year. I told him if he skipped hunting season this year, that he might be able to make that happen. He tells me, takes his laptop to his blind with him, so he can probably take care of both. In any event, we're hoping to get the engineering and design work all wrapped up soon, get it out to bid. You know, we've got quite a process for bidding out, and that adds to the timeline, but my hope is sometime middle of next year, those utilities will be up and running.
Any questions for Mr. Harris on the utilities? We have one additional agenda item. It's Task Order with Dr. Robyn Associates for consulting engineering services associated with the transfer station, five-year permit renewal. Mr. Harris?
This is a business item that we budget for, like so many other things out at the landfill. Mr. Dr. Robyn has been our consultant for those services for years, and his contract and services were in place before I got here, but the reason this is coming to the board is I think that we need to have each of these exercises and services utilized by Task Order like we do the other engineers, so that's the reason it's coming to the board now. This is a budgeted item. It was in the budget each year. He has a copy of those items that are coming from DEP throughout, sent us a list so that we can enter it into the budget ahead of time.
Any questions? Any questions on this side? I don't have any. Have a motion to approve? Motion approved. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. This time, we'll open the floor to public comments and concerns. If you would make a name to the podium, state your name now just for the record. I heard you found your phone.
I did. I saw you call. Jimmy Norris, Executive Director, Swanee County Chamber of Commerce, 1-8152-136th Street. Just real quick, I think we've got these passed out, just wanted to be sure because we do mail out these invitations to everyone and all of our members, but with some of our emphasis that we've been trying to do on the south end of the county and get more involvement down there, we're having our next mix and mingle down there, which is kind of our new business after-hours program that we put in place. Many of you attended the program that we did at Lafayette about two months back, and that is, this is the next version of that, but it will be on the south end. We really need your help down there. I know Commissioner Richardson, we've been trying to get down there, and some of you guys that have contacts that maybe we don't, that's important that we reach out to those people and let them know. It's gonna be a great time of networking, just like we did at Lafayette. There were, there were several kind of connections made that night that we heard about afterwards, and that's the purpose of these, to get the word out, to help promote the business itself. But we all need to work together. So just wanted to personally be sure that you got one of these. We did mail them out, but brought them and handed them out tonight. The next thing, which will be October the 1st, is our Business of the Year Dinner. Again, I know many of you participate in that. I want to see you all there, especially since the sponsor of it is the Swanee County Economic Development Office. River Oaks has always been a partner for us on that event, so they're listed, they're also at the bottom, but the Economic Development Office. Dr. Jackson said if you're not in favor of that, since technically it's not been funded yet, you can fire him. He's quite all right with that, so, but we had to go ahead and get this out on the flyer and the leaflet. Obviously, if we waited till October 1st, wouldn't do us a lot of good. So just want you guys to be sure to put it on your calendar and come on out this year. You know, last year, we had over 150 attendees. This year, instead of just small and large, we have went back and looked at a more accurate representation of how our membership breaks down. In the past, the cutoff was kind of 50 as far as in employee count, and that's not a real accurate representation, because we have, the majority of our businesses are 10 and under. So this year, we have a small, medium, and large business that we'll be awarding, as well as nonprofit. Believe it or not, they're... Believe it or not, there is many, many nonprofits doing a lot of work in this community, and sometimes they don't get recognized, so we're gonna be recognized the nonprofit of the year also, so you guys would, put it on your calendar and share it with your friends, and other than that, that's kind of all I have.
I appreciate it.
Chairman, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, ain't none. Mr. Harris, you got anything for administrative comments?
Yes.
Board members, requests and comments? Mr. Hale?
I don't have anything.
Sessions?
Right now.
Mr. Richardson?
I just want to say, I appreciate, appreciate Mr. Harris being at, and Debbie being at the town hall meeting in Branford, we didn't have very many show up, but I think the information provided is helpful. Always helpful when you have explanations about what's going on, so that people, when they start hearing rumors, they don't get the wrong idea, because they don't have all the information. So, thank you, Mr. Harris, appreciate it.
Mr. Fleming?
I don't have anything, I just want to, I mentioned to the chief earlier, that if anybody watched TV 20 News, I saw Swanee County Fire Rescue on there last night and this morning. I think it was, the paramedic was snout and crawled, they were on 129, they was talking about during Labor Day, what do paramedics do, what first responders and their job, their role in their job, and it was like TV 20 was here like six hours Monday, and it was a real nice little segment that they had in there, and when they mentioned Swanee County, you know, I am going to look, and so I had the opportunity to see that last night on TV 20 News and this morning when I got home from work. So, I say to the chief, a job well done for your employees, what they do for Swanee County first responders.
Thanks, sir. I just got one question, Mr. Harris. Do you know, we approved the ad for Dr. Jackson's vacancy, do you know when that's gonna hit? I've had a lot of phone calls, want to know when the job description's gonna be ready and...
I don't know how long it takes for it to get in the paper, but it's going into all those other, it should be, Paul is working on with all those seven or eight different outlets on getting it in there online.
Okay.
And they'll probably make it there first.
Okay. I was just wondering, they want to know where they can get an application and where they can get a job description, or when.
They can pick it up at our office.
Is it available now?
Yeah.
Okay. The only other thing I got is, I've had several phone calls off of 100, or not 100, 96th Street, out close to Orange Baptist Church, there's several log trucks close to one resident parking in the ditch, and I know they gotta have a place to park, but it's creating a hazard there, and I've had several phone calls, I told them I'd bring it up tonight at the meeting, just to make you aware of it, Mr. Vatt aware of it, that I don't know how y'all want to handle it, or how we need to address it, but it's close to the intersection of, it's not 217, 209, I think, if you go past Orange Baptist Church, it's right before the next intersection, off of 96.
Same thing on Dry Prairie Road.
The what?
Dry Prairie Road.
Same thing on there. I, sir?
There's a guy on there.
I know, that's... Okay. Thanks, sir. I just, it had posed some safety concerns to several of the residents out there, and I told them I'd bring it up tonight. Only other thing, welcome, not up here yet, but will be in November, congratulations on your election to District Four. We look forward to working with you, I think. That being said, I don't have anything else unless y'all do. Just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion adjourned.
Good job. Thank y'all.
Yep. Commissioner left.